Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April thirteenth Town Council meeting for the town of Bladensburg. We are now called to order. Want to acknowledge that, yes, we're meeting on a Thursday, which is not our normal day. But we did, as a council, agree to move the meeting from April tenth to today because of the Easter weekend. And so for those who did practice religious observances over the last week, week and a half, we do hope that they were pleasant and appreciate your patience in the adjustment to tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda, and so I'll call for a motion.
So ma'am.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
Y'all on mute. I second.
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt, seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any further questions or edits to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move forward with the approval of meeting minutes, beginning with the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Also move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowell. Any corrections, edits, or comments about the minute? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And to the next set of minutes for the meeting on Monday, March thirteenth, I'll call for a motion to approve.
So ma'am.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. So we are pleased to be joined at this time by the Director for the Department of Public Works and Transportation for Prince George's County, Mr. Michael Johnson. And I do want to thank him for joining us, but also the reason for his appearance tonight was when we were going through our series of meetings with County Executive, also Brooks, regarding the Warm Night Shelter, one of the outcomes of sharing the town's vision for moving forward and priorities was an opportunity for a flood barrier pilot project. And so as a follow-up from that meeting, at the County Executive's office on February twenty-seventh, Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Ross, our Prince George's County Municipal Liaison, reached out about this pilot project and interest of the town of Bladensburg. And it just seems like a great opportunity and made sense to bring it to the rest of the team for your awareness and to really give you the opportunity to ask some questions of Director Johnson. And there is a brief summary that I provided for Mr. Chernovich to include in the council package, but it doesn't do it justice to his presentation. So Director Johnson, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you and just want to make sure, are you able or need to share your screen with the PowerPoint slides?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Glad to be here. Yes, I think we're trying to share our screen now, so if you could just give us a moment.
Sure, give a, well, give it a moment.
Thank you. Um, I need permission to be able to share. Somebody can.
Sure. So, Mr. Gray, could you allocate permission to Ms. Joanna Smith, please? And welcome to you, Ms. Smith, as well. Thank you for being here.
Okay, here we go. All right. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes, we can see it. Excellent.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks again, Mayor. And, you know, good evening, members of council, Michael Johnson, Director of DPWT for Prince George's County. And with me this evening is one of my associate directors, Ms. Joanna Smith. And she's in charge of the Office of Storm Drain Maintenance. And her office would be largely in charge of implementing this project. So together tonight, we will sort of, you know, within the time constraints that we have. So we have about twenty minutes on the agenda. I don't think it will take us that long to get through the presentation, but Joanna and myself will be making the presentation tonight. So the mayor sort of mentioned that pardon me, gave, yeah, and it's sort of like a precursor to the idea that we're looking at. Excellent. So we'd like to implement a residential flood barrier protection system to prevent flooding in many of the flood-prone areas within Prince George's County. Now, Prince George's County's soil has a lot of mica in it. It tends to be impervious. And that means that, you know, water doesn't easily percolate into the soil. And as a consequence, due to being built out in many of the municipalities and other areas, flooding is a, is a problem that has sort of plagued, if you will, put it in quotes, or been a problem in the county for a while. So one of the things that DPWT is working on is looking at creative ways with newer technologies to see if we can bring some relief to communities that have been long suffering with this problem. So we wanted, whenever you're starting a new project with our new technology, you really want to start with a pilot. And the pilot really gives us a chance to work out the kinks of the new technology, get sort of like a state-of-the-art as to how it should be implemented before we scale it up and expand it. So in looking, seeking communities for the pilot, we looked at Riverdale Park and we looked at Bladensburg. And there were two locations within Bladensburg that seemed to be very well-suited for this pilot. And one of the strategies that we're, we are attempting to use with this initiative is to tap into the State Revolving Fund, which is a Maryland Department of the Environment Fund that is, that provides loans, and I'll speak about it a little bit, for, you know, resiliency and stormwater mitigation, flooding mitigation kinds of projects. One of the benefits of using the SRF is that if the environmental, you know, emphasis areas meet certain scores, that loan reverts to a grant. So in other words, the money is effectively free. So that, this is the first time really that this kind of money has been made available for flooding and resiliency issues. And it's really a reflection of what is happening nationwide regarding climate change. So be that as it's made, it presented a wonderful opportunity for us to find a way to introduce technologies that might otherwise be quite expensive, but that are now available because the money is effectively free. Next slide, please, Joanna. So the areas that we looked at were Quincy Run. And the first one is Quincy Run between fifty-second and fifty-fifth Avenue. And it has a, an EJ score point eight-one. And the graphic showing, you can see if you can see my cursor, is showing sort of the outline of the proposed wall structure. Now, these homes here, there were fourteen homes, I think, have suffered repetitive flood loss. Water getting into the basements, other kinds of damage, whatever it brings, largely because this culvert here that is circled may be undersized, appears to be undersized. So whenever you have heavy rain, water sort of backs up and you get a lot of the flooding in this low-lying area. So using the barrier idea, this would provide about thirty-five hundred and sixty feet of barrier that is proposed. And a bit later on, we'll explain how the barrier works. So next slide, please. And the second area that we looked at is Edmondson Road Channel, Thausig Road to Spring Road, that has an EJ score point seven-eight. It's in a FEMA flood zone, a deep I floodplain. And the flood, again, is restricted by undersized culverts. And these culverts were put in at a time when, you know, the climate wasn't as severe as it is now. So it may have been able to pass the water, but today it's sort of serving as a pinch point and causing water to back up and flood projects, properties that are adjacent. And these properties have suffered repetitive loss, fifty-four eleven Taylor Street, fifty-four oh eight and fifty-four sixteen Spring Street, Spring Road, excuse me, have also suffered losses. Next slide, please. This will be about six hundred feet. Now, the cost of the barriers, I mentioned, it's quite expensive using that option. And we are, in addition to, could you go back this slide? Thank you. Yes, it's about thirteen million dollars that is expected to get this done. And we use a design-build method of approaching this. And this design build is utilized where it's sort of an easy way to, or faster way to get one entity to prepare the plans, get the permits, and build it, as opposed to the normal design bid-build way where you have an engineer who would design it, and then you go through your review, and then you have to bid it. And everyone is already familiar with that, but that takes a long, much longer period of time to get done. And we'd like to sort of get this done in a faster timeframe. Next slide, please. So to get this to work, we, we need a local cooperation. And this is why we are, this is our first, you know, so we spoke with Mayor James, and we are, you're going to sort of work closely with you on this to sort of get this done. And we're proposing a design to sort of fund the design with a cost share between the county and Bladensburg. County would pay three-quarters of the price for the design, and Bladensburg would pay a quarter. And that would be the design. And then the construction, as I mentioned, would be financed using the SRF. So really, would more or less be free if we're able to do it that way. Next slide, please. And this here, this picture here really demonstrates the value of flood barriers. Now, this here is a location of Lawrence Hospital in Binghamton, New York, that was during Hurricane Irene. And you could see that what occurred is Hurricane Irene hit the area. And then about slightly more than a week later, you had a tropical storm leave that dropped about another foot of additional rain. So the ground is totally saturated. The rivers are at flood stage. And if this hospital, this is a critical facility with elderly people, sick people, you know, maternal patients, a bunch of things, would, would have been in a crisis if the flood barriers were not present to keep the water at bay. And this is the basic idea of, of what we are proposing. So that with the areas, go back, go back this slide, one last, thank you. The areas within the sort of bathtub that I would call it, right, are protected from floodwaters by the barriers, which are designed, they're metal barriers that are thick enough designed to resist the force of the water and keep the areas that you want to protect, protected. Next slide, please. So this area is like what, this is one location in the Great Plains, I believe, in the Chicago area where it is. But this is sort of what it looks like here, this little video. So it is self-rising. So as the floodwaters rise, the barrier lifts. It does not require human intervention. It does not require mobilization of forces or anything like that to make it work, to activate it. You, you can move on. You can move on, Joanna. Next slide, please. And this is an example of other barrier systems. If somewhere is like, like the city of Annapolis, which is a coastal city, and several other coastal cities also are proposing barriers like this to keep, to deal with sea level rise. So this is a, you know, a solution, an engineering solution and a creative one to the, the problem that everyone is sort of facing with climate change and sea level rise and effects of that. And next slide, please. So Joanna, you want to go ahead?
Yep, go ahead. Well, thank you, everybody, for having us here. My name is Joanna Smith. I'm the new Associate Director with DPWT, Storm Water Office of Storm Drain Maintenance. All right, so some of the items that we're actually working, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, one of the things that we have to do in order to be able to put a design-build bid out there is to ensure that we actually have preliminary site assessment. So what does this mean? This means that we actually have to start looking at the preliminary and the most basic things in the site. So that includes utility locations. We also have to check our geotech, so doing borings in the area to identify what type of soils we have in the area, what are the soil parameters, groundwater table that may affect foundation, as well as the bearing capacity that also impacts how large or type of material we'll have to use for our foundation. The topographic survey as well, that will assist us in identifying the entire drainage area, the elevations, inverts of the current and existing storm drain systems out there, contours, different types of elevations, or any as, as well as the properties, individual property lines and structures out there to make sure that we're not impacting anything else. Right now, we're looking at about a six-month period to be able to identify all of the preliminary assessments for now. We have already reached out to one of our consultants to start developing this. We're working, trying to be, working concurrently with all the different pieces of the puzzle here in order to be, you know, work as exponentially as possible. So the other thing that we are going to need, which is part of this presentation, is partnership with the town to be able to get easement and right-of-entries. The right-of-entries will help us right now as part of do allow our consultants, survey crews, and utility locators and geotech to be able to go behind the homes along that stream corridor to take the elevations and soil samples as well. Okay. So what we're trying to gain from doing the preliminary assessment is to be able to give our future design-build consultant enough analysis and data that they can keep, you know, take that and keep moving and get it done within eighteen to twenty-four months. However, the other things that we want to ensure that we get from the analysis is identify any constraints that when, that we may be able to, you know, we may encounter in the future. Part of this is also for us to be able to work concurrently that while we're doing the bid, which, as you know, that may take a couple of months to go from advertisement to award. And during that time, we can coordinate with the different entities and regulatory agencies to ensure that we have the proper path, proper permits, negotiate with them as to what we can and cannot do so that we have a smooth transition through the design. So some of the, if you can see my map here, some of the things that we're looking at, as you know, we are in the floodplain. So that pink area that you see here, it's the flood, the one-hundred-year floodplain. As you can see, some homes are actually in the floodplain. So doing work in the floodplain in current regulations can be a little difficult trying to navigate through all the permits. So we anticipate having some back and forth through the permit process with FEMA and MDE as well. Because that is a stream corridor, we will be dealing with MDE, the Maryland Department of the Environment, with wetlands and waterways permit with them. That process can take, you know, anywhere from nine months to a year, depending on how, depending on how much work we're doing and how much of the impact it will be. Army Corps of Engineers, that kind of goes hand in hand with MDE, so it's a joint permit. So you start at the same time, but not necessarily end at the same time with this permit. Deep I, our sister agency, we have worked with them with different projects, so we know that there will be some items that we will have to negotiate with them, work through, and some compromises here and there with the permitting. However, you know, because of the floodplain, which is the key portion in this entire project, that can take a little bit of time through reviews, making sure that we are calculating the proper cross-sections, we're not increasing any water surface elevations. And also the other one, which is, if you see in the map, is the green shading. And here is part of the M and C PPC, Maryland National Parks, right? So there are natural resources in every stream valley, whether it's wetlands, tree canopy, different types of species trees that are protected and so on. So that's one of the things that we're already looking at, that we're going to have to start communications early on so that during the permit process, we have awareness of the project, the need of the project, and anything that we can work together with the multiple agencies to ensure that we can move the project quickly. All right, so based on the feasibility that we're going to do right now with the preliminary assessment, with the consultants and all of these different permitting agencies, you know, we will be working, the county, the county will be working to make sure that we're, you know, finding them and determine the most efficient flood mitigation measure and make sure we advance that through construction. Mr. Johnson, back to you.
Thank you, Joanna. So some of, as Joanna mentioned, we, we are looking at the flood barrier. But in addition to that, we're also looking at some of the pinch points that I mentioned in some of the earlier slides, the culverts, and to see if there may be a cheaper solution to alleviating the flooding. So we are looking at, in addition to sort of advancing this, and, and you can see that we're sort of recognizing, you know, what the risks are to the project in terms of time, and that often they lie around permitting. We have many sort of strong regulators that we have to sort of work closely with to resolve that. We're also looking to see if there are other solutions that might help to sort of bring solutions. But we, at the end, we will have a, a method of moving forward. So this, so let's just talk a bit about the next steps. So because the town of Bladensburg is a, a separate body, politic body, corporate from the Prince George's County, we cannot just come into your territory and do any work. We don't have the authority to do that. Unless the, we have a resolution of support and an MOU, concomitant MOU, between the two bodies, corporates and body polities that allow us to do so. So we are requesting, respectfully requesting, a resolution of support for the, for this initiative from the town of Bladensburg that authorizes the county to develop and deliver the flood control pilot within, you know, your corporate boundaries. So that would be the first thing that we'd need. Then, we would then be able to move forward as, as the project develops, the design develops, and developing a budget for approval, because the figure that I mentioned of thirteen million is a very tough, you know, rough figure. It's very, we haven't done any engineering work yet, so we don't quite, could be lower, could be a little bit higher. But, you know, so we will, we'll sort of finalize what that budget could look like. You know, the MOU I mentioned. And then we need to, Joanna mentioned the right-of-entry forms, and those right-of-entry forms, as I, as I think about it, really should have to be joint right-of-entry forms that, that sort of authorize, you authorize the county's agents to enter onto properties. Not, not as you're authorizing, but we have to. Bladensburg has to be part of it. Almost as if you're doing the project and we're working for, for you in a sense. And we would then be authorized to go to your residence and say, you know, please give us right to enter onto your property to do the surveys, you know, utility checks, floodplain, you know, issues, the matters that are essential to sort of develop a property sign. Then we would look at the, the alternatives, because I sort of mentioned that, you know, we have flood barriers. We might look at, you know, expanding culverts or something like that. There may be different options that we could look at, but we'll end up with a final scope of work that we would then be ready to bid for the design builder to take through final construction. But projects like this are, it's really critical for them to work, for us to hold community meetings and to sort of stay close, not only with the legislative partners, but also with, you know, residents. And these meetings would be held in both English and Spanish. I think that that's a common language also spoken by many of your residents in Bladensburg. So you want to sort of be as accessible to as many people as possible, so everyone understands what is being proposed and that, you know, the rumor mill doesn't take over and sort of not help to derail the project. And then, you know, we would sort of develop, as the project moves on, the project notifications, once we're at the stage of sort of getting ready to sort of build things. You know, we want to make sure that everyone is aware of what is being done, when it's being done, how it's being done, so that they become sort of an ally and, and sort of like see us as a welcoming presence in their, in their community and some, doing something that is beneficial to us both. So I think that is, that's all that we had as a presentation. So we would stop at this point and, and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for giving us that presentation, Director Johnson and Assistant Director Joanna Smith. Really appreciate you as well contributing to that. And again, thank you for bringing this opportunity to Bladensburg and considering us. I think in recent memory, the flood of twenty twenty, September tenth, twenty twenty, was most devastating. We've had a few bad ones since, but that significantly impacted those homes that were on the, the diagrams that you displayed there. And just, I think for all the council and staff, just brings back some really challenging memories in, in terms of the damage and devastation that was done so quickly. And so, again, as I said, we appreciate this opportunity, but I do want to open it up for questions from the council and staff. Because again, if, you know, we need the team to determine if this is something we would like to move forward with, especially knowing that we do have to invest in it. And I'll let them go, but Director Johnson, when I come back, my question will be, how likely is it that the loan is forgiven? Because that's a huge piece of this, you know, what if that doesn't happen? But I'll start with our legal counsel, Suellen Ferguson, with the first question.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm familiar with the type of MOU that you would do and also the rights of entry. So those are not difficult concepts for the, the town willing to sign on to. But the funding is, and the question is, when do the monies have to be paid? And also, is it permissible to go to other, there are other sources of grant funding to pay for the town's part of this project? And are there such sources?
Yes, definitely. Now, the SRF is, was attractive because the EJ scores, it qualifies for law of forgiveness. So that was made it very attractive as a, as a first source. But there is also FEMA money that's available and other sources. There's lots of money now that's being released for resiliency. You know, as, as climate change is being taken a bit more seriously on a national basis. And we would seek all sources of, of funding to try to put together a package that is the most cost-effective way of financing the project, to put it that way. Right, we want to, to get free money if you can get it, grants, or, you know, very low-cost loans if they, if they are, if those are available, but we're really looking to do it using the model where it's not going to cost us anything to do this. Right, we'd be made of gold with whatever we spend to get this done.
Thank you for that. Ms. Ferguson, did you have another question before I move to the next person?
No, Mayor, that was my question.
Okay, thank you. Great question. Just going down the list here, Councilmember Rowell.
Thank you, Mayor James. I'm lowering my hand. Thank you so much, Director Johnson and Deputy Director Smith, for your presentation. This is very informative, and I have two questions. First, I wanted to know regarding the easement process. Because the culvert that we're talking about, from my understanding, was county-owned. The culvert, the culvert in itself. So I'm just not understanding the reason why you would need an easement as a relative. So I'm just not understanding the reason why you would need an easement as it relates to the housing properties that is, that, that are here identified in the one pager that you sent.
Joanna, do you want to come? I think, I know that's what Joanna.
Yes, sure. So certainly, Mr. Johnson. So the easement is not for the covert. The easement is, and right of entry is for the back of the properties where the flood barriers will be located.
So you want to go back, can you go back in the slide to where?
Sure, let me. Not big on using Zoom, so I apologize.
You're doing great.
All right, come on, one more. Like a slide two or three, I believe.
We go creative with our animations since they.
Well, you all did a fine job. Did a fine job.
That was very impressive.
There it is. Okay. So your covert, we're, yes, that one is already part of our inventory. But the flood barriers will go behind these properties here. So that it's not our land. That will be, some of it will be private property. Some of it might be, you know, like open areas here, they might be owned by the town and things like that. So I think overall, we counted fourteen, but for the easements, however, for the right of entries, because you know, we're going to be working over here, over there. You know, some people might, we, we might want to get right of entries from these, you know, some of the other homeowners, if we're going to be taking benchmarks or things like that for utilities. So it may be like closer to thirty eight, probably forty for the right of entries themselves.
So I, I guess, thank you so much, Deputy Director Smith.
Associate, sorry.
I'm sorry, Associate Director, I was giving you a.
I know, got a promotion here.
Congratulations. So as I was, I see, I think this is Mr. Sharnovich, you put it in the chat. I would like to host just, or the town council can host something for these thirty eight properties to receive this same information so that the homeowners, even before we start MOU in or easement processes or signing up to get their buy-in from the beginning, because I know some of these homeowners directly have told me they have lost faith in government systems because of the devastation that did happen in twenty twenty. And so just starting with them, you know, immediately, like right after this, I would, I would recommend. Because it is their property. So now that we would need easements, that's my recommendation that we act swiftly on that even before we start talking about investing money or anything else. And then my second question is, how does that FEMA resiliency work? I had the opportunity last month to attend a meeting with Congressman, sponsored by Congressman Ivy's office. And FEMA was there giving presentations about all of their grants and so on. To my understanding, there needed, there needs to be some type of designation that there was a situation or anything. And back in twenty twenty, we actually worked through the emergency all the way up through the state of Maryland, emergency FEMA department, maybe I'm not calling it correctly, but it's the Maryland version of FEMA. MEMA, there we go. Hey, see? And they told us, unfortunately, we couldn't get that designation. So I'm worried, you know, about even the resiliency grants, because that came up in this conversation. And FEMA has said, well, unfortunately, if you don't have that designation, there's nothing we can do. Do you know something else?
So there's multiple, there's multiple areas within FEMA that provide grants. So the one that I think you might be talking about is actually the one that they partner with communities for flooding or resiliency, but it's more of stream restoration. That one, they don't really you, there's a lot of different steps and qualifications that you have to meet. There are, all their grants that we can actually go through with FEMA. Some of them, actually, we just submitted one, well, not us, but Department of the Environment submitted one for the hazards mitigation program. That one has that, you know, you, you still have criteria that we have to meet. One of the things that they want to make sure that you're showing is flood prone areas, how many cases, how repetitive they are, which some of that data we have from photos and everything else, but we also have from three one one that we can pull back and say, hey, we can go back five years and you can see all the spots. One of the other things that we're doing is the blue spotting program. I think Charlie made it into the meeting. He has, he started that before I joined. So that could be another tool that we can use to submit in the grant and add additional information to qualify.
A bit about what that is, because I don't think most people call that.
Yeah, Charlie, if you are there, if you want to join and talk about this one.
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
So, uh, blue spotting is a very simple straightforward program. Just kind of imagine all of the county is elevation tiles. And basically we put water over the entire county. It drains all the low points. And then as those little points fill up, they spill to the next low point. So it helps us identify all, all the lowest elevations across subdivisions and everywhere else.
And this is made possible because the, the state of Maryland recently did a very high quality LiDAR flight of the state. Now, the LiDAR is, you've heard of radar, which is sort of like using radio waves. LiDAR is using light waves. That, so they're very, very accurate in terms of determining the elevations. So the base map that, on which the blue spotting is based, we have the entire topography, which is the sort of lay of the land of the entire state of Maryland. And we can then identify areas that will flood first. And that's really what the blue spotting is. So there's, we have a lot of data. We're sort of like very data centric type of organization. And, you know, that data would help us in terms of being successful in applying it for grants. Of course, we can guarantee that we gather grant, but we will put for a very strong application for it. And we will look at every possible source to sort of minimize the cost of, of this, this type of a project.
Yes. And there's also DNR grants available too. And as we move through that process, you know, one of the great things about partnering with the town of Blensburg is also that we can, you know, submit the applications as joint forces and show that there is a commitment between, partnership between not just the county, but the towns, we can get letters of support from other entities and the town homeowners. That also, you know, help us get a little bit of extra points in the applications. But yes, there are ways that we can get additional grants and that's something that we're going to be exploring as we move along. And to touch on your other comment about notifications to the homeowners, that is one of the things that we have in place, which is a reason that we were talking about getting communication out in both English and Spanish, because we, you know, we know that there is a large Spanish speaking community in Blensburg as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. We do want to get Officer Reinhardt and Councilmember Brown in here. And I'll note it's six fifteen already and we're still on the first real meaty substance of the agenda. So we do have to move forward. Officer Reinhardt?
Good evening, Mayor Council. My question is, we have a combination of open and closed culvert system. So with these floodgates per se, once they go up, is it going to cause a channeling issue? When it reaches the closed session, closed sections of our storm drains? For example, in your map where you have circle is actually the bridge right there that goes over fifty second street, which is a state road. During our last flooding issue, there was a issue with just the amount of water flowing through where it actually caused it almost to wash out a good section of the roadway there. With increasing the channeling there, there's the potential I see that it actually is going to, can take out that entire bridge. Is there any thought into that matter?
Well, these, these are things that I guess Joanna or Charlie could embellish what I'm saying. These, during the design phase, these are things that we would look at. We, we're not at this stage able, you know, we don't have like engineering, no engineering has been done to address some of the concerns that you were pointing out. But during the, the engineering phase, we would look at the entire hydraulic effect of what we're, we're proposing. And it's possible that one of the options could be that we replace that culvert with a more, you know, with, with a structure that's able to pass the water that is created when the barriers are up. So it would be properly engineered so that your concern would be addressed. We, we're not at that phase right now. It's just a very conceptual phase that we're in.
Thank you for that question, Officer Reinhardt, and then Councilmember Brown for the last question.
Yes, thanks, Mayor James, and thank you all for coming out. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make my question real quick. And my question is around maintenance. And, you know, what happens after the pilot program? What if the pilot fails?
What if it fails?
What about maintenance too?
Well, let me just answer the thing. I know we have to wrap it quickly. We, the county would take on the maintenance of this structure. So we'd be responsible for its, it's, you know, you'd have to come and pump up the sumps and make sure that it's functioning the way it's meant, it's designed to function. And in the event that the pilot fails, I guess the county could remove it. I mean, it's the hour, you know, it would all be spelled out in the MOU that we sign as to what, what our obligations would, would be pursuant to this particular structure. But I, sorry, go ahead.
No, and, and the maintenance concern as well is because Quincy Run Creek, the county is supposed to maintain that. And I know at one point in time, they were like two years behind or something in maintaining that Quincy Run Creek. So, but that's why I definitely would want to know about the maintenance. But thank you so very much.
So thank you again, Director Johnson. We definitely appreciate your time tonight. Mr. Griffith, thank you for jumping on as well as Associate Director Smith. And so at this point, the council will just need to determine if we want to move forward with this project and take a formal vote. I know when we had the initial call, you mentioned some source of funding could potentially be ARPA funds for the twenty five percent design cost. So we'll have to talk through that and determine, again, if we want to move forward and if that level of funding is there to support this project. But again, there, the peace of mind that this would generate for the residents who've been so impacted and who lost everything over these last few years and had to rebuild their lives would be tremendous. So again, thank you for taking the time and we'll certainly follow up with you in the next few days to let you know where the council lands on this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. So at this time, we'll try to pick up some time here. I know we went a bit over, but that being a major infrastructure event that touched a lot of us. I mean, it, that flooding primarily happened in Ward one, but I know our council members from Ward two were also there to help at the time dealing with easing the burden on the residents along with our dedicated staff. So I think, and tell me if you all agree, but because it does have a financial impact in order to move forward or make that determination as to exploring this further, we would just need to add that to financial business under the council meeting agenda to discuss that further. So I just want to get a quick poll. Is there interest in doing that now? Or I think we have a budget meeting coming up next week and could even discuss it in the context of the budget meeting. Councilmember Ralph?
Thank you, Mayor James. I'm lowering my hand. I do think that we need to, before we make a decision, we need to speak with the thirty eight homes that would definitely be affected from spring to toss it, well, spring to the back of Taylor. And then the multifamily units as well along Quincy Run before we can determine, you know, before we, I mean, what if the residents say that they don't want it? You know, we can, I hope they want it, but we, we want to give them voice.
Thank you for that. And I did hear that recommendation during your comments before, but thank you again for that. Is it the consensus of the council to have an open house with the residents first before making a determination to move forward? Or do you want to put this on the agenda for the seven o'clock meeting? I can certainly see that in, as was stated, I would imagine so, especially after some of those homes that had six and seven upwards of eight feet of water in them wanting to ensure that does not happen again and really having reservations about even coming back to their homes following the devastation. But Councilmember Brown, I know you're over in Ward one as well. I'm curious to get your thoughts. And again, you know, if we need to take this to discussion during the, the upcoming budget meeting, so we can have more time, totally open to that, but just don't want to leave it here because this is a huge project. And we don't want to miss out on this opportunity and have it go to another community. So Councilmember Brown?
Uh, thanks, Council, Councilmember Ralph and Mayor James. It's, uh, it's, well, it's very sensitive and, and I think maybe something has to be done simultaneously. And because I think while it would be a good opportunity, but we do want to hear from our residents and to, to, you know, to hear, to hear their, their thoughts. Because, and then another thing, because my concern also is the maintenance. And then as, as Mr. Reinhardt mentioned, you know, the overflow channels and everything, but if they're, you know, once they, they are doing their design and considering, you know, all, all of these things, because while I think it would, it would be, would be, would be great. But I think maybe that's something that kind of needs to maybe happen simultaneously, you know, and we're letting them know, well, hey, this is the direction we want to hear from you all. But at least going into that, the, the direction for something that is that will, if that ever happens again, benefit. But it's, it's just, it's somebody, but then that, and then I don't think where we're going to be at a course where we, if, if we have so many residents or park rangers saying, okay, no, we don't want, don't want to do anything. You know, we can just, you know, I guess like pump the brakes or, you know, or she'll stop. But but because that's getting their input, I think it's, it's going to be a, a process as well. But I think maybe some things.
Thank you. I appreciate both of you. Again, just out of respect, because you both represent Ward one. I think it's very important to, to get those perspectives. And so we can definitely move forward with that in mind. So at this time, we'll quickly move on to the Patriotic Committee update. And I do see Ms. Renee Green on, so we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Yes, just a reminder that Memorial Day is coming up, will be May the twenty ninth. So we need to get out the word. We need to get the letters out to people and the hundred dollars over to the American Legion. Also, we had what the flag means to me program. I still have the essays from last year that we can go through. And I, I need to know if that's something that we want to continue or what we're going to do. I am meeting with Ray next Friday to work on the letters and, and whatever else we need to do in the office, because I know, you know, Diane used to do all that for us and I don't know what's going on now. So I want to play a more active role to make sure that everything gets done. But I'm also going to need help and assistance.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Green. And we definitely have the Memorial Day event on the calendar, on the actual holiday, and the start time will be eleven AM.
Yes.
Followed by the luncheon at the American Legion and we will be at our newly renovated Peace Cross.
Yes, yeah, I will be able to see it.
Yes, and with the newly constructed barrier that will be done any day now. Mr. Charnavage would be helpful and I'll make a note as well, but if you could just assist Ms. Green in getting the hundred dollar donation, we usually donate that to the American Legion for the food that they offered for the lunch that follows the ceremony. And then with respect to the essay contest, I know last year we didn't get to do the in-person presentation. The council wasn't meeting in person at the time and talked about an alternate being to still recognize the twenty twenty two students who won the essay contest. and, um, who won the essay contest with maybe a breakfast on a Saturday and combine that with this year's winter winters in June so that we celebrate both. We don't want last year's winners to feel like we just forgot about them and so still doing the certificates and so forth. And so, uh, Mr. Charnovich, if we can ask for your support with just helping us identify a date in June that works for the town council and any staff members who want to also be there, um, to celebrate it. And Ms. Green, of course, um, it'll be dependent, um, on that, uh, her availability as well. But we just want to at least pin it a date in so that as the contest is moving forward, we can communicate also when the winners will be recognized. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that works, Mayor. Uh, thank you. We can work to identify a date in June.
Perfect, thank you.
And I'll make sure that we contact the, um, the schools to let them know that we are continuing with the program.
Yep, perfect. That sounds great. Thank you so much, Ms. Green. And appreciate all your help with our Patriotic Committee. And, um, you're welcome to stay on, but we're gonna keep rolling right ahead. Uh, still have quite a few things to get through. Mrs. Ferguson, thank you for your patience. We are now over to the two items that you, uh, requested for tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take up the easier one first, I think. And I think you've received a copy of the proposed amendments to the Ethics Ordinance and the Financial Disclosure Form that was provided. These, um, really are acquired by the state law at this point. So there's not much really, uh, that I can say other than you have to do it. They require that your code look like the state code. And so, um, and then the Financial Disclosure Statement has been brought into conformance with these changes and is ready to go for you to use this year. So, um, that is for introduction and adoption. And then you would send a copy of that down to the State Ethics Commission. We can actually do that ahead of time if you want to go forward with this. I can just go ahead and send it down to them for their approval. Which is, um, I, I think if this has been approved by, uh, the State Ethics Commission for others. And so I think the way it's, uh, stated will be fine, but it's, uh, not a bad idea to do that even before you adopt.
And did anyone, as you read through to the council, did anyone have questions for Mrs. Ferguson about anything that was stated in the revisions? I think it was pretty straightforward, Mrs. Ferguson. So seeing we don't have any questions, I think in, again, council.
I did have a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I was trying to raise it. Thank you, Mayor James. Um, Ms. Ferguson, what about, um, I didn't see anything about subcontracting. Um, just in the, in the, we're, in section one, um, it talks about, you know, procurement. But what is the, the state's position on subcontracts? Because sometimes, you know, that's a, another way around.
Well, uh, some of the wording, uh, there is the towns already. Uh, I took it, of course, I amended the, uh, town's existing ethics ordinance. But subcontractors would be treated the same as contractors and it's really a matter of i- is there a conflict of interest in some way? So, uh, you don't get to avoid that by being one step removed. And any questions that came up about that, you do have an ethics commission and you can ask for an advisory opinion if there's a, you know, a possibility, uh, that arises as to whether it's an appropriate thing to do. You can ask for that opinion and then go by that opinion and rely on it too. So.
Thank you.
Generally, anything that's gonna cause a conflict of interest is gonna be a violation.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Row. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor James. And, um, and I don't know, I may have missed it, but I do want to ask the question because I know we're dealing in contracts. Usually there's an addendum to show exactly what changed. So, um, did I miss that showing exactly what changed or do we suppose to just go line item by line item to see what actually changed?
The, um, the items that are lined through with brackets
I didn't see.
Were moved and the items that are added are in capital.
You said the items that are what now?
Councilmember, on, it's on the first page. You see the little, the line, like three quarters of the way down. And where it says cap, indicate matter added to existing law.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the key right there at the bottom for the rest of the document so that you'll know how it's being shown. And of course, sections that are not affected are, are not there or can be identified just by those dot, dot, dots. It just means they're staying the same.
Right, yeah. Uh, thank you very much. I just, I'm just with the conscious use of the addendums, be really spelling out what it's like. Here's a list of what it's shaped like. But okay, thank you.
No, I'm with you. I was looking for that too. And then when I went back, I was like, that's their way around it? The little? It's different, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And so again, uh, Mrs. Ferguson, as you said, if the council is agreeable, you can go ahead, make those changes and submit those to the state on behalf of the town. So we just, uh, my concern is the delay. I don't want this to be delayed and want to make sure we're complying as quickly as possible.
You can go ahead and put it on your agenda to introduce and adopt.
Okay.
I can go ahead and just send it down to the Ethics Commission. I don't think they're gonna have any comment, really. Uh, but you should, you should go ahead with it and get it introduced and adopted, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. All right, well, we appreciate that. And then the next item is a little more complex with the small cell towers. So we'll turn it back over to you.
Yes. This is, uh, as you, you've all heard of five G. And what that ends up being in your rights of way is usually an antenna that's put on top of a pole. And also there's some underground wiring. So the federal government has required that you authorize these types of attachments uh, the way in the old days, um, telephone was, uh, was allowed to be in the right of way because it's considered to be very important to have uh, sufficient broadband in, in all areas in the country. So the Federal Communications Commission has laid out what has to happen. And so as a result of that, a couple of years ago, the town adopted a law that references the installation of the five G antennas and other small cell facilities in your right of way. And things were kind of quiet for a while. And then, um, the county also adopted a law uh, along the same lines and assigned their tower committee, which is the committee that's been regulating the big towers that you see that are not in the right of way. They're in the, you know, they're pretty far from everyone. And, and so you see them around. Those are also regulated and the tower committee handles that. So when the county adopted their law, they handed over, uh, the jurisdiction to uh, review applications for the smaller antennas, small cell to the tower committee also. And then, uh, the county, of course, has control of zoning. While we may not agree exactly that they have control over zoning in the right of way, they are already authorized in any zone that these antennas be placed, so it's not an issue. So then the question comes up about how do you review these applications as they come in? And they are starting to come in to Bladensburg and other small municipalities. Uh, Ca- College Park is the first one I know of that was getting one. Hyattsville's gotten some. And, um, uh, Berwyn Heights is, uh, also in line. And there's a couple of others where they're starting to come in and ask for, uh, installation permission and to get a permit. So, uh, I have developed, I've drafted, uh, an agreement that in other jurisdictions that I represent have to be, has to be signed by any uh, company that wants to come in and put something in your right of way. So that's kind of already done. It can be, uh, altered for, for Bladensburg, but it's, it's there. There are some, and the main thing that you really have to think about, and I wanted to ask you to think about this evening is, um, there were, there's a fairly long application that's involved with this because you have to be careful about placement in your rights of way. There are gonna be now and, uh, as we go along, many requests to be in your right of way. And it's, you know, it's not that big of a space. And so, uh, there are certain things that you need to know. So you protect your residents and you also protect the capacity in your right of way. The, um, what the, uh, companies that are providing this service have been doing, some of them are providing it just for themselves, like Verizon. Others are doing it as a contractor for other providers who will then go on to, uh, go through the provider to get their services. And what's been happening is they go to PECO and ask to be able to switch out the pole and put out a bigger pole because the existing poles are wood and they're not really made for this. And these antennas have to see each other also and they have to see around obstructions. So there's just a, a practical reason for that. Uh, you have, uh, you're about to receive some applications from one company that wishes to be in your right of way. And the thing that you need to decide right now is to be able to review those applications, you have to have someone who's got those, that skill set. And you don't have somebody like that on staff right now. Actually, nobody really does. And so what College Park did, which is the first of my clients that had to deal with this, is they hired a company called CTC. And CTC also does the reviews for the county tower committee, which handles this for the county. And, um, they gave the same rates to the city as they gave to the county. And the, the city has a contract with them to review any of these applications that come in for how they'll affect the right of way and whether they're safe. And you don't have a lot of say so over whether or not these companies can be in your right of way. The FCC has said they can, and they've also said how much you can charge them for that, which is in your code. So the question for this evening is, the county has been doing a full review of the applications that come in, even if the, uh, location of the antenna is in municipal rights of way. I'm not quite sure why they're doing that, but they have been. And so the plan that they've been following, and we heard that they did this with Hyattsville, is they reviewed it. They approved the plan from their perspective and then they sent it to Hyattsville Government to issue permit. So in that respect, Hyattsville, I believe, is relying upon the county tower committee's review and is not doing an additional review. Uh, College Park, on the other hand, uh, hired CTC to look at the antenna applications. And even, and, and the county's just doing their parallel review. The College Park's person is looking at it for the city. And then the city, um, takes it up as a permit and approves a permit. And the city has, um, a license agreement that has to be signed with anybody that wants to be in the right of way and it has an application that has to be filled out. And then the CTC person looks at it and makes the recommendations to whether the, uh, permit should be granted. And sometimes other permits are required. It depends on what's involved. But if they're in, into your asphalt, then there's something else with that too. So you, you have two choices here. One, you can decide because the county does seem to be doing these reviews regardless of whether you do or don't. The county's gonna look at it and not charge you for that. And then it's gonna get sent over to you and they will have done their review. Now, they do their review from the perspective of the county. And not necessarily from your perspective. Where these antennas go is a matter of the architecture of the plan that comes in. And so you want to see what the architecture is, what the grand plan is. Because obviously you would prefer that they, that these placements be in the commercial areas rather than in the residential areas. You are not allowed to take health concerns into consideration when issuing one of these permits. Because the FCC has told you that they have determined based on decades old information that that's not something that you can look at. So you're not allowed to. But residents want, a lot of times residents want to look at that. And so one of the best ways to avoid all that is to have the placements, um, in commercial where they're farther away from the, um, single-family homes and the multifamilies. So there is other concerns that the county might not be looking at in your particular neighborhoods that you might want to look at and see if you can work it out with the provider or the applicant. So you, those are the two choices. You can do it on your own. You can hire CTC or someone like CTC um, on a, a contract basis to look at them for you. I don't know how many of them you're gonna get or how expensive that's going to be. However, you can charge as a cost back to the applicant the cost of the CTC review because that's expert help that you need to determine whether or not the placement, the location, all the plans are correct. So they do have to recome, reimburse you for that. But it's another administrative level so that your manager or your clerk, whoever is in charge of that at the time has to keep track of that and make sure the contracts are up to date and the matters are being, uh, properly handled. So you're gonna have to deal with these one way or the other. Your decision is, do you want to go with kind of the Hyattsville program, which is let the county tower committee do their review. Once that's done and they sign off on it, then it would come to the town for permit review. But you wouldn't do an, another engineering review as long as the county had okayed it, you would okay it too. Or you can have the full review like College Park will do, which is your person will also take a look at it and, um, sign off. And then the permit would issue. So that's, that's the question for you. And I don't know if your staff, you know, has a recommendation about that. Um, but either of those is a perfectly acceptable route to go. You have more of a, the local input if you're looking at it yourselves. But if you trust the county to do it for you and they would relieve you of, of a lot of the administrative burden of handling it.
Mrs. Ferguson, thank you for that overview. Um, I just want to open it up for questions. And then also, as we do that, I appreciate you sharing both approaches to how we can look at this. Um, one of the things I did read though was that there can be modifications if you have a historic community. Um, but I, of course, we don't have that designation as, at this moment. But are there any other considerations that we could have so that we could limit, as you were saying, the locations? So they don't all end up near the homes, but are more in the industrial areas?
Uh, there's, uh, a couple of answers to that. First of all, the agreements and, um, the, the agreements that I've been writing, uh, involve adoption of the county's manual on this, which has limitations in it about placement, not being too close to driveways, a number of other things. Okay? But like I said, um, the county's stuck with the federal law too, and it's like a thirty foot. My recollection is thirty feet. That's all they have to be away from the house. So sometimes there are ways to negotiate, uh, especially to avoid, um, public opposition to an application. If there can be a slight, um, modification of the overall plan to stay as much away from residential as you can. Part of the problem that they have is, like I said, they have to physically, the, the antenna have to physically seat each other. So they have to be placed in an area where they can connect to each other along the route. And they would be connecting to already existing facilities elsewhere. And the idea of, uh, five G, which is, and they're already looking at ten G, is to increase broadband coverage to, um, but make up for the fact that more unmarked people are using mobile devices. And then you're gonna have, uh, self-driving cars. And that's gonna require a lot of broadband also everywhere. So there's a uh, reasons for it. And the federal government has decided that this is such an important issue. uh, reasons for it and the federal government has decided that this is such an important issue that they are gonna mandate that it be in your rights of way, but there is some, some leeway.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Brown.
Uh, thank you, Mayor James, thank you, um, Ms. Ferguson. My question is, are the laws that much different between the municipalities and the county? Because I know sometimes, uh, well, a lot of times, you know, we are in a, in a line with county laws, so with us doing our own study, you know, having it, having the book of town, having the expenditure and then you know, what is, is there like a ballpark in terms of what that, what that, uh, cost is? And, um, yeah, and so how would, how would the laws work differently versus municipality than the, than the county?
Uh, the agreements that I have drafted are, uh, do adopt the county standards. It's because it's not really a good idea to have, um, an applicant come into the town and the county because they're also in the county areas and have to go through, uh, have to comply with two com- different sets of requirements. You know, so, um, the municipalities that I'm representing anyway have been going along with what the county requirements are. And so far, you know, this is all very new, that might change, there might be something that doesn't work very well, but right now, that's where we are. And so, uh, you could go, uh, use the county's tower committee review as yours. Uh, they do not look at it from as local a perspective as you do. They don't know the neighbors in that neighborhood, they don't know, you know, the particulars, ju- they're just looking at plans when they do this. So, um, and plans don't tell you everything. So it's a more personal thing if you keep it with the town, but like I said, they're both, they're both um, good ways of going, uh, and, and, and dealing with this issue because you're gonna have, you have to deal with it. So far, the companies have been coming in and trying to resolve this before making formal requests because of the shop cost that starts to apply. Once a formal request comes in and the companies have been trying to, because everybody's in a new situation right now with these. And they're trying to give everyone enough time to, um, negotiate a good outcome. So, but you are gonna have to deal with it one way or the other.
And Ms. Ferguson, it, you touched on an important part without, well, with just rubber stamping whatever the county says after the tower committee reviewed it, would, basically, we'd lose our local voice in terms of understanding personally what the appetite of our residents are in terms of placement in the right of ways. But you haven't seen tremendous challenges with the other communities, I know College Park is going the route of having an expert, but for Hyattsville and the other communities, are they not having any issues or concerns from residents?
I don't represent them and I don't know. Uh, I know that there was, um, a lot of concern several years ago before the pandemic. And then everything just kinda quieted down because nobody was doing anything. Um, it's, it's a trade-off at this point and, uh, people want the broadband coverage. So, it's, I haven't, I haven't heard anything yet, but we haven't gotten very many yet. So it's hard to say, um, we're still, this is all very new still in terms of the operational part of it, it's very new.
Thank you, Councilmember Rout, sorry, I had that follow-up in there, go ahead.
It's okay, um, so in the event, so I just wanna understand the other side. So in the event, if we were to choose to go the route to exercise our local voice by having an application process, having them apply through us, having the review done by this third party, what if the, um, company that's applying disagrees with us? Would we have to take on that appeal process or would that go straight to the county? Like, what is the other side of if they disagree with the decision, if they're in, in the event, there's a denial, of course?
Well, then I think that's when you start getting into, um, court actions and administrative actions. You know, I haven't followed all the way through on how that would be, there would probably be, you would not issue the permit and then they would move with, for an injunction to make you do that. So, that's my guess.
So regardless of the two, we are still at risk of an injunction is what you're trying to.
No, uh, well, the, you're always at risk of that if you're going to try to deny a permit. Um, if the denial reason is only because you'd rather have it rooted somewhere else because it's a residential neighborhood, right? It would depend on the circumstances, if there's an easy way around it, then possibly you can get that negotiated. Right, um, so, I don't think we don't have enough experience yet frankly, but I don't think these companies wanna come in and companies are different also in their attitudes towards residents. Some are more empathetic than others. Uh, but I don't think they wanna make enemies, uh, in a municipality, that's not a, a good thing.
That makes sense, well, Ms. Ferguson, thank you, sorry we went long with this discussion, but it was an important one because as you said, those applications are starting to come in and we do have to determine the way that we're gonna proceed forward with them. I was just trying to take a look and see, okay, so this is on our next meeting agenda so we can discuss it further and um, come to agreement around which path we wanna take forward, recognizing we only have nine minutes left in the meeting, um. I'm looking at most of the items here, I think they're on the second meeting already, um. Let me just do a quick, um, hit here, I think with growing green with pride, I can just quickly give a summary when I do my report with the annexation specialists, we can, um, table that until next month if there's agreement there, um. The mosquito spraying, Sean, do you wanna hit that really quickly because that is important for residents to know?
I could hit it now or I could hit it during my report.
Okay.
Meeting, if that's okay with the council.
That works, um, I'm seeing heads nodding there, so next meeting. Uh, mental health awareness, Councilmember Rout, did you wanna say something there or hold it until the next meeting?
Uh, w- we can hold until the next meeting for the sake of, for the interest of time, thank you.
Thank you, and then the other item is also on, um, the agenda under Financial Business, the End Time Harvest Ministries twenty twenty-three graduation banquet, so, um, we have one item for next month and then the others will push to the seven o'clock meeting. So we'll just have to make a motion to amend the agenda to accommodate those items and I'll do a better job moving us forward, so don't get mad, but we're gonna push everything through, um, but with that, uh, we are at the end of the agenda for tonight's work session and wanna thank everyone who tuned in and, uh, all of our team members on the call from the council to the directors. Um, thanks for joining and at this moment, I will call for a motion to adjourn. Was that Ms. Blunt, I'm sorry, Councilmember Blunt, okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Brown, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much, we're adjourned and we'll see you back in about seven minutes.